All right, it is 7:00 PM and I will call this meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Janet, if you would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Chirpiano, here.
Councilmember Tillman, here.
Councilmember Clovin, here.
Vice Mayor Diaz, yes.
Mayor Juan.
I am here. All right. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Excellent.
Yes.
Can you come every two weeks?
Yes.
That was great. Next is item three, public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone that has any comment that is not on the agenda tonight, now would be a great time.
Mayor Juan, I have one hand raised on Zoom. Scott, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hey, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right. Thank you, guys. So I'm sure everyone on the council has heard already we're having our second annual Pride Parade in Clayton, June 4th. I know we're going to have a ton of people down there. And I really want to thank Peter and Holly for their support during this whole process. They've been instrumental in terms of getting this off the ground. I have to admit, I'm a little bit disappointed, though. Jeff, a few years ago, you made the comment about if there was ever a Pride Parade in Clayton, you would proudly march. You specifically said that. I'm sure you remember that. You did not march last year. You had a conflict of interest, as you said. You're not marching this year. You again have a conflict of interest. The message went out in January. So I'm not going to judge you on your conflicts of interest, but I do question what this means for the children of Clayton who are looking to their leadership or guidance and direction and to set a proper example and honestly, to do the right thing. So Peter, Holly, again, I really appreciate you guys stepping up in that regard. Scheduling conflicts don't really set the bar very high. So Kim, I haven't heard from you. Jim, haven't heard from you. Don't expect to. Actually, Kim, I believe you have a scheduling conflict as well. So again, you guys are leaders, allegedly, of this town and you owe it to the children and to others of this town to set a good example. And I expect that from leadership and I appreciate that from Peter and Holly. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Okay. I will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any items they would like to pull?
Yes, sir. I'd like to pull item number 4A from the calendar. Discuss that, George.
Okay. Any other items?
For me, it's, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses tonight. D.
D.
D is in.
Dog.
Dog.
Okay. You know, given the folks here, did we want to, we can take the consent calendar after and we reorder the items so we can do recognitions first?
Beautiful.
If that's amiable to everyone?
Thank you.
Okay. So I would table the consent calendar for now and then move on to item five. And this is recognitions and presentations. So that way, the folks here can do their thing a little bit. So 5A is recognitions, certificate of recognition for Do the Right Thing. And Councilmember Clovin is taking this item.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. And thank you, students and principals that are out there in our virtual land. Just to give a quick background, in 2012, Mayor Hank Stratford basically put together a plan called Do the Right Thing. And he did in conjunction with Mount Diablo Elementary School, Diablo View Middle School, Clayton Valley High School, which was before it was Charter, and City of Clayton, the Clayton Police Department, and the CBCA. We all got together and decided that we're going to have an initiative that focuses on developing of a community culture based on good character. And we chose six common character traits, responsibility, respect, kindness, self-discipline, integrity, and courage. And in 2020, I believe, we added the word inclusion into those character traits. And so we had an amazing example of somebody in our past mayor, C.W. Wolf, who was able to really connect with the children and the parents, even though we were on Zoom during COVID. And what I would like to do is try to get back to doing it in person. I remember Mayor Tuya Canolato giving out the certificates and having the family and the kids present while the teachers or the principal gave those certificates to them. And it was such a joy to see their faces light up and we gave them their certificates. So we're going to try to get back to that when school gets back to the section in the fall and make that an expectation that we're doing this in person again and get away from the Hollywood Square games of virtual participation. So but we're going to do it tonight. We do have two students from Mount Diablo Elementary School and two from Diablo View. And we'll start off with, is Principal Sanchez, you here?
She's in her car. I see her.
I am on Zoom.
And then we have, so, great, excellent. We have two students. Why don't you introduce them and tell me why they are getting the certificate for integrity for Do the Right Thing this month?
Well, you have Melissa Fail, who is going to introduce her student. And she can say her items. And then I believe you have Adriana Lopez in your office or in the meeting. And I think her brother was the amazing pledge allegencer. And I will be saying her message.
Awesome. So let's start off with Melissa Fail. Want to introduce your student?
Hi. Yeah, so my student that I'm giving the award to this month is Reagan Stice. And she's there over on Zoom. Did you know you were going to get this, Reagan? No? Okay. So I picked Reagan. I picked Reagan for integrity because Reagan is a student this year at MDE and she's in my four or five combo class. And with being in a combo, Reagan really has had to step up with her learning and be a self-motivated student that takes on the challenges of learning herself, which she does with integrity and confidence every single day. She is a student that approaches her learning with honesty and strong notions of what it means to be a good student. She is someone that is honest and admits if she is at fault for something and learns from her mistakes. I thoroughly enjoyed getting to know Reagan this year. And I did have her brother a few years ago. And I enjoyed getting to know Reagan and having that family in my class again this year and helping her along the way of her fourth grade journey. She is fully prepared to go to fifth grade and tackle that. And I'm sure she will shine in the fifth grade. And way to go, Reagan. I'm really proud of you.
Reagan, that's awesome. Congratulations. So you may not need to see it, but we have a certificate right here. If you come on down to City Hall, we will make sure you get that. And you can put it in your room. It's quite an honor and we appreciate your being here. Thank you very much, Fail, for introducing her. And we'll go on to the next recipient from Mount Diablo Elementary School. And who is introducing, Miss Adriana Lopez?
I am. And so maybe Adriana can also get Reagan's award. And so we won't have to worry about it coming in the mail.
Awesome.
But I am reading for Colleen Van Otry. And integrity is doing the right thing when no one is looking. Adriana is the perfect example of this life skill. She chooses honesty in all aspects of her life. She takes responsibility to do her work and follow the rules without being reminded. She shows respect to people and animals. When it came time to nominate someone for the life skill of integrity, Adriana was the obvious choice. She is also an amazing big sister. And I know that I look forward to seeing her every day, as with Reagan. But I get to see Adriana every day because I'm down at the different playground. So congratulations, Adriana. And to Reagan.
Adriana, can you hear me now? Adriana, this is for you. Congratulations for doing such amazing things that your teachers think you get that certificate for integrity. And we're really proud of you and we're glad you're here in person. Thank you so much. I'm going to stick your hand, get a picture. You going to show us? You get to hold that. And thank you, Adriana, for being here in person. Awesome. And now we get to go to the middle school. And if Principal Fong is in the room?
I think we're just, Janet's checking to see if he's on Zoom.
There he is. Welcome, Principal Fong.
Thank you.
Are either Taylor or Valerie in the waiting room? Not seeing them.
Well, one of them was softball game. And I know the other one was, unfortunately, she wanted to come in person, but she had health issues. So she's at home on Zoom, so.
Well, excellent. Why don't you tell us about your students?
Okay. Well, if you are in the waiting room, please raise your hand so they can find you. But I'll start. So think of integrity. The words honor, moral, and goodness come to my mind. You could argue that integrity sits at the very heart of the Do the Right Thing program. People of integrity do the right thing regardless of the situation, whether to be supervised or whether others are doing it or not. They just do the right thing. So all that said, I'm bringing two students forward. Oh, there's one of them. Hi, Valerie. So that's Ms. Valerie Martha. And then we also have Taylor Leighton. So it comes no surprise that both are excellent students, extremely trustworthy and reliable. And both are well deserving of this recognition. And there's Valerie.
Well, thank you very much, Principal Fong. We really appreciate your participation in this past year. And Valerie, thank you for being here on Zoom. It's quite an honor that the principal has recognized you for integrity. And likewise, we do have a certificate here which we'll make sure we get to you that's signed by all the council members. And really appreciate your stepping up and being recognized for integrity and the student and the citizen that you are. Thank you so much. Valerie, do you have anything you'd like to say about integrity? Or you're certainly welcome. Were you surprised by this as well? Awesome. Well, you deserve it. Thank you very much, Principal Fong. And thank you, Valerie, for being your representative for your school.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Principal Fong.
I think that concludes item 5A. And next is 5B. Councilmember Tillman, are you taking this one?
Okay. Excellent. So let me get over to my notes. Where'd they go? I'm missing my notes, but we had a resident last time we gave out these awards. Remind us, I think it was Janet?
Yes.
Janet Easton was sitting in the audience last time we gave out these awards. And she reminded us that in the past, hey, thank you very much. Have a great night.
Good night. Congratulations.
She reminded us in the past that we used to give out this reward or award to adults when they were deemed to be appropriate. Or we called it the Unsung Heroes Award. And since that suggestion was made the last Do the Right Thing meeting, we had a couple people reach out and said, hey, we know an unsung hero that should be recognized. And it seems appropriate to do so in light of the last issue of the Pioneer that came out and was on the newsstand. And if you looked at the cover, for those of you who saw it, it was 20th anniversary of their first issue. And when you think about the Pioneer being a source of local news for 20 years, being your trusted local news source, that certainly was something that was worthy of being acknowledged. And you, my dear Tamra Steiner and your trusty husband, Bob, are the recipients of our Unsung Hero Award for today. And we have that word for you as well as.
Oh, you have it.
I do. As a few comments that have been sent in by the public regarding your service to our community. And with that, I'll let Councilmember Tillman take on those comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Clovin? Yes. And I would say that a lot of them echo a lot of what Councilmember Clovin just said. And so I'm going to read them aloud, if you'll give me that grace. All right. Tamra has done such a fantastic job with the Pioneer. The need for local happenings is great and the business is modeled harder than ever. Tamra's covering local news and events. Tamra and her staff's covering local news and events and growing the paper when others said local news was not worth it. She and her staff are great community supporters, too. And in the end, all news is local. It's not important about the paper circulation size. It is content. The Pioneer is topping local news, events, and happenings. Congrats on your 20th anniversary and best wishes for many more to come. Another person said, 20 years ago, Clayton was graced by the new Clayton Pioneer and it was true, it truly was a gift to the Clayton community by Tamra and Bob and the crew. Tamra and Jill covered what's important and filled a huge void in local news coverage with grace and accuracy. The paper has continued to cover local news unlike any other resource and has grown to cover our neighboring communities. Congrats to all on a job very well done. You are a treasure. Clayton's hometown paper, The Clayton Pioneer, has been an excellent asset to our community, providing accurate, timely news to the Clayton Valley area. Tamra and her staff continue to be a dependable source of unbiased reporting about the issues that impact our community, expanding to also provide needed coverage for adjoining cities. They are a shining example of the positive value of maintaining the free press for smaller communities. This one should sound really familiar. Congratulations on your 20-year anniversary. Thank you, Tamra Steiner, for your dedication and professionalism producing the Clayton Concord Pioneer newspaper for these past 20 years. You have truly filled the niche, keeping our community well informed of the happenings within Clayton and the surrounding areas. I especially love the calendared events section and the positive articles about our children along with the specialized informative columns written by our local professionals. You have helped make Clayton a community. Tamra, on behalf of the Clayton Historical Society, I want to thank you for the 20 years of exposure you have given us. Each time we have a new exhibit, you let the public know about it with the write-up and pictures on the front page. I know this brings in visitors to the museum. Often you come in yourself to take pictures and interview the exhibitor that put the exhibit together. Also, I know being in charge, how kind you have been regarding the Gardens Tour. You always include a picture and a nice write-up telling about the tour, the date, and times and how to get tickets. We could not be successful without you. I don't know why that would make me tear up because maybe because I know who wrote it. All right. I wanted to add a few words for Tamra. She has given her time and compassion for others as long as I have known her. She volunteered, oh my goodness, hold on. Maybe you should read the next one. She volunteered as a choir director for many years at St. Bonaventure. She helped me out when my husband died suddenly and handled the details for his obituary. Tamra is a strong, wonderful woman whom I'm proud to call a friend. You can read the last one because that one.
I do need a bigger.
Tamra is someone who does more than just report stories because she cares about community. She is reporting the stories. She cares about the community she is reporting the stories about. It's more than just the news around town, but being concerned about people's well-being, such as her efforts around wildfire prevention and safety at people's homes. She also supports the true small businesses that help make this area vibrant. Her love for this community drives her and it shows everything she does. So those were all of the ones that we received. And I will add on to that probably how come I got a little bit teary-eyed. But both Bob and you, I have to thank you for all you guys that did for me when I was in the hospital for my kidney transplant. And Bob was the first person here who actually wrote to me to find out how I was doing. And so I know that you have had your health issues and I'm so happy to see you sitting here in the chambers today, which is why I'm emotional. And you and your staff have definitely, you definitely have been out there when all the happenings have been happening with the Charter School, with anything that's happening anywhere, with all the elementary schools, the Diablo View Middle School, et cetera. Thank you, guys, for all you guys have done. Everything okay? Okay. Thank you, guys, for everything you guys have done. From Jay Bedakari, Bob, Tamra, Bev. I'm missing a couple of other people, too. You guys have really hit it out of the ballpark these last 20 years. So thank you. And with that, if you'd like to say a few words, any of you, we'd like to have you come up to the podium.
Turn on the button. Turn on the button. Hit the button. Hit the button. The on button.
Oh, that button, the one that says on? That felt really good. Thank you. You didn't read the others that are on the other side of Ledger, right? Thank you. And thank you for acknowledging Bob. He's had a struggle the last few months. And to see him upright and dressed up in something other than sweats is really exciting for me.
My only comment is, by now, you've all discovered that Tamra is the brains of the outfit. I just bring the good looks. And that's critical. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. I want to introduce our correspondent. Norm Holquist is here, right there. And I don't see, is Jay here? I guess Jay is not. He has a sick brother. And my son Jerry and my daughter-in-law Mitzi are here to see this. This is nice. Thank you.
And we turn it back over to you. Yes, thank you very much.
That was awesome. And when I first moved to this community, the first thing I did was read the Pioneer. And I've done it ever since. And I've always appreciated the work that goes into it. I know it's, well, I don't know. I don't know how much work goes into it, but I imagine it's quite a bit. So it is a much appreciated asset to the community. So thank you both very much. Next is item 5C. This is a welcome and recognition of new local businesses. And I would introduce. If our new city manager would like to kick us off? Or would you like me to take this one?
Pardon my voice. You can take this one if you don't mind.
Sure. Okay. I wasn't sure because on the agenda, it lists you, so.
Yeah. The less I talk to this meeting, the better, probably.
So this is a new idea that was brought up to kind of promote some of the new businesses in town that have opened up over a certain time. We do it twice a year. This is the recognition from, I think I'm looking at the agenda reports, October 21st, 2022 through April 30th, 2023. There are five that were invited to, one, two, three, four, five, that were invited to come. And I don't know if any are here at the moment. But if not, I don't know if there's any online either. We did send an invite. It's, if not, that's fine. There's just an opportunity for new businesses to introduce themselves in town. There are five. It's the Clayton Hair Fair, the Orange Door Hair Salon. I don't know, I don't recognize the Strategic Liaison, Mora Beauty, and Total Aura Spiritual Spa. And the last two are downtown, four of the five are downtown. So if they could not make it and if you would like to make it, feel free to reach out and we can set up a time that works for you. That is item 5C. So I think I'll move us back to the consent calendar. And for this, we had pulled items A and D. So maybe we can just discuss those and then we can go for the whole thing. Peter, you pulled A, so we can go with that one first?
Yeah, since the last meeting, I've had a couple people ask me about the car show. And I'm aware that it happens. But I couldn't answer any questions about how it was a city event versus a private event, how it was funded, when it started, what permits were pulled for. There were so many questions I just couldn't answer. And I'm not saying that those questions aren't answerable or that I'm against it. But in light of the recent conversations we've had relative to how the Concerts in the Grove went from a three-person group of Howard and Julie and Jim to now a city event which has a budget and control, to this event, which again, has no, I don't know what the management structure or how it's affiliated with the city or anything like that. There's a lot of questions. I just couldn't answer any of the questions. And rather than just approve this item, what I would like is for an opportunity for the staff and for Jim to bring it back in the next meeting and say, hey, here's the history about this and how it came to be. It's a city event, city-sponsored event. It was approved on this date. This is the permit history. This is who's taking out the permits. This is temporary use permit, the sound permit. These are the costs that have been paid historically. And so we could just answer the questions and put a lid on it and then say, hey, great, go forth for the rest of the summer. But right now, since I can't answer any of those questions and I don't have any of the back history and the story, I would prefer not to put this approval on it this week. And I'll just wait until the next meeting. And I think with Jim's help and the staff's help, it can give a lot of clarity for what's going on and what the future looks like on this event.
First of all, nobody's ever asked me about the background on it, but I have all the background on how it's done. It is a city program just like the Concerts in the Grove and the July 4th Parade, just like those three. And it started back at Skipolini's Pizza. And when they realized that it was not bringing in additional money for putting on the shows back in 2010, it was abandoned for a year or two. Then the volunteers that want to show their vehicles came to the city before you were on the city council and said, we'd like to get that going again. How do we do it? And so we made it a city event. I am the primary staff person for that. I raised the money. I get it completely covered by outside donations. The largest contributor is Republic Services. My business contributes to it. It only costs about $1,200 to put the whole thing on. I do all the staffing for it. I bring out the barricades. I set them up the night before and I take them down at the end of the show. We get 25 to 30, sometimes 35 automobiles that come out, all totally handled by me and the money that I raised from our sponsors.
And I appreciate that. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, we've been doing it for nearly 10 years. And it goes back after Skipolini's Pizza stopped doing it in 2010. So we picked it up. I picked it up. Surely they're. So we picked it up, I picked it up shortly thereafter, probably in the 2004, 2005 timeframe.
No, and I appreciate your efforts. You've been amazing at both.
I appreciate it, too, but that's the answer.
No, 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 I, I appreciate your efforts, and just like I've appreciated your efforts historically on putting on, on the, on the concerts in the park. It's, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate it. What I want to see is the, the record of the conversations at the city council level going back at the agendas, and I want to see the, some, some of the permitting associated with it, or the, or the decision by the city council not to have a permitting associated and, and actually cause it to be a, a city event. Not doubting you, I just want to see that, and I think that that would show that.
But it's a public record.
Perfect. I'd like to, at the next meeting, it'd be wonderful to be able to see that and say, hey, here's what it is. And then we can, we can, we can then approve it accordingly. I just want to.
It never costs more than $1,200 a year.
Perfect. Let's have that conversation at the next meeting and, and show what, what the history is and the paperwork associated with that, from the original permittees to the current permittees.
But it is a city event just like the Fourth of July Parade and the Concerts in the Grove. All volunteers put all those on.
I, I appreciate that. I'm just looking for the background for it before, before I.
I'm just giving you the background on the concert, excuse me, the car shows, and I'm happy to discuss it as another item, although I don't know what it would be after I just went through it all.
I appreciate your, your verbal history. I'd just like to see the, the, the council record associated with that. Thank you.
So if I could interject here, I, I would like to say, I, I think bringing something back next meeting, I just want to make sure staff workload isn't too overwhelmed where we have the budget process coming up. So I'd like to bring back any information that council would like to at least hear on this, if that is the direction, as soon as possible, which may be the next meeting, but it may be slightly delayed depending on the budget process.
So I, I would just say that this, this item doesn't actually require action. It's just for information only, so there's no, no action taken for here. It's presenting because it is, it is clearly a city event. I think, you know, given the direction that we're going with record-keeping, it may behoove us to treat it similarly to concerts, and we can do that and have it as a separate item, so it's very clear. I don't think, I think the questions that you have are, are useful, and so staff could probably address that offline. I don't think that there's anything that we would need to, it's not really any action that we would take. But if you do want it to come back as something that you are not interested in having going forward, we can bring it back as an item at a later time as it fits in with the agenda, and we can talk about that as we plan for, for the upcoming items.
I think it's just a matter of if we're going to make, first of all, I want to see the decision, the original decision that made it a city event versus a private event.
If that's not available, then.
Then, then let's codify it as a city event, and like we do with the Fourth of July and like we do with the, the Concert in the Park. And if, just like we do with the Concert Park, there needs to be a succession plan and/or a subcommittee that takes care of this instead of a, a party of one. So let's just treat it like in a more formal manner like we, like we are treating other things recently. Just, just, just want to make sure we're, we're giving everything equal weight and being consistent.
Sure. And yeah, like I said, we, we can sequence that discussion in alongside of the other agenda items that are upcoming. We'll take public comment at the end on the entire consent calendar. Thank you. Was there anything else on item A?
Make a general suggestion for consideration that I can talk with you individually offline is, you know, there are a lot of policies and procedures that city needs to kind of enact as we move forward with a variety of things, one of which is a streets closure policy related to user fees, one of which is probably a special events policy more globally, which this could fall under along with Fourth of July and Concert in the Groves. And I think maybe looking at it more comprehensively when we do come back is maybe a more astute way to, to deal with these in a, in a broader umbrella than kind of one-off by one-off way of addressing city-sponsored special events. And so, you know, I'll, I can take that along with staff and then bring back a proposed process for another agenda in a later date that maybe looks at a more comprehensive review of special events as a whole for the city.
Sure. That sounds, that sounds great. Any other comments on item A? Okay, item D. I forget who, you, you pulled it. I was like, who pulled item D? Okay.
And the only reason I wanted to kind of pull this from the consent calendar, and I don't know how it works, so we can put it back in, but I wanted to personally, I had a lot of questions around item D, again, because I'm not always familiar with what an RMRA is. And I really want to thank Brett and Larry, our engineer, for answering those questions. And I just wanted to share a few things that I asked that, I don't know, might be important to the general public, because I know everybody's concerned about our streets and paving and just a few of the highlights. I'm not going to repeat my whole laundry list of questions. And we did make a couple of corrections on the, the street names. We had a couple of boo-boos in there, but I was curious how the list was chosen about what streets we're going to be paving in this turnaround. And I guess this is, we discussed this a little bit at our last budget and audit meeting, too, I think, right, Larry, when we're talking about capital improvement projects? But this was a list that was left over from 2020, and because of a limited budget, we weren't able to pave those at that time. Is that correct?
That is correct, council member, TRPI.
And so then the staff was directed by then-city manager Rena Schwartz to get these kind of back on the agenda. So that's why we're doing these particular streets now. I was concerned were there other streets that were more worthy of paving, but this is our, this is our current list of, what is it, Collector and, remind me?
Arterial.
Arterial streets, correct. And they had lower ratings than others, you said, correct?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to provide a little bit more insight. I, I would like to, as you mentioned, there are a couple, a couple corrections. In particular, the attachment A to the resolution, I like to put in the record that the streets that were selected are correct, but the limits, or there was a typo. It talks about Mitchell Canyon from Clayton Road to Harriman, Harriman Court. It says Herman Court in the staff report, but it is correct in the resolution. The other correction is Mount Vernon Drive is the street that is being resurfaced, but it's from Mount Etna, not Mount Edna, to the end. So those were, the streets are still correct, but the, the limits need to be corrected. In terms of the street selection, my firm came onboard in 2022. At that time, there was a paving project that was already bid out, that base cities had already been selected, but it was delayed, partly, I believe, from COVID, and there was a few, I believe it was a combination of cities doing a one-bid project, and there was some complications with that, is my understanding. And so the list that was utilized was actually from 2020. That project actually finally got paved in 2022 during the, my first summer last year coming onboard. And those streets were part of a selection process, I believe, out of Street Saver. And I could talk about more generally, but there were also a subset of streets that they included as a bid alternate, basically saying, we'd like you to bid on these streets, but if we can't afford your total bid, we're only going to take the base bid. And so they only took the base bid. These were the bid alternate streets that couldn't be afforded in that original 2020/2022 project. We essentially, when we talked to the city manager about developing the next paving project, there was a combination of both grant-funded, which was through MTC, and it's called OBAG 2, One Bay Area Grant, that we combined that with the rest of the, some of the RMRA funds to then fund and pave those bid alternate streets. We do have to make a distinction, just to be clear, OBAG funds are, since they're federal, have to be at a collector and arterial level, where RMRA can be used at any, from residential collector arterial. So there is a combination of all types of those streets, and the way the funding is segregated is based off the, the particular category they're in. This will be the last set of streets that we're including in this original list. My intention is to come back before the council, or maybe I, I might suggest a subcommittee. I don't know if that's the most appropriate, but the city should have a street selection policy going forward.
I love it.
Lot of cities utilize Street Saver, just, Street Saver is essentially a program that will give you the most optimum use of your dollars to keep the PCI at the highest level it can be at. But that might not be exactly what the community wants. I've worked in other communities where, a good example is, a street that's really in poor, poor shape is very expensive to fix. So to spend that same amount of dollars, the raise that PCI would be small compared to using that same amount of dollars on, streets aren't, aren't so bad that you're just resurfacing them, and your PCI would go higher. That's not an inherent problem, it's just optimization of your dollars. But that leaves that particular street usually low on the list and may never, ever get to that street if you never have enough money to do all your streets. So it's a really good example of how you have to maybe balance what, how you want to approach your street selection, both, do you want to do surface treatment and heavier type of rehabilitation, which is more expensive, and maybe split it on a percentage? Those are the type of things I'd like to bring back. Or there's other elements of, Street Saver doesn't care if one street's right next to another, you know? It might make more sense, even though this street might be 20, you know, 20 streets down in priority, but since you're right next to this other one, why don't you do this neighborhood as a whole? So those are things that Street Saver cannot really incorporate, but you use the tool to be able to get the sort of quantitative analysis from the money slash pavement condition index, and then you take the practicalities of economies of scale, less mobilization, or frankly, you know, in some cities, you know, bigger cities, I'm not saying Clayton would really be, but you know, if you're splitting the districts, a lot of times you see each district gets a certain amount of dollars. So I think those are just very general things I would like to bring back to the council. I would say this list is just the completion or continuation of something that was already selected prior, and I would feel, and I think when I discussed it with city manager Schwartz at the time, I said, well, these streets are already selected. If you're going to bypass them now, then they're going to feel like they've been passed over. So I think this is appropriate to finish sort of that sort of process from years ago and then kind of, kind of come with a clean slate going forward. So hopefully that addresses the wrong questions.
I really appreciate it. That answers my question, and, and if you don't mind staying up there for a little bit, we talked about the, what the materials will be used for most of the streets, and I don't know if you want to.
Sure. I think that's another point of discussion. I think in last year's paving project, primarily, most of the streets were surface treatment-type streets. So that is what's called a slurry seal or a micro-surfacing. Essentially, the existing asphalt is painted over or sealed over, and there's aggregate or small rocks that are placed together, and it seals the top of the road. It doesn't replace the existing asphalt. That's a very effective use on streets that have not failed so poorly that the, the surface seal won't work very well. And it's, you can do probably 10 times as many roads on a surface treatment versus replacing asphalt. But you do need to replace asphalt on certain number of streets because they've gone poorly enough condition that a surface treatment wouldn't be appropriate. So this, in the 23/24 project, Mitchell Canyon Road will have a overlay of new asphalt. Generally, the rest of the streets will all have a micro-surfacing, a surface treatment-type maintenance rehabilitation. I do think this is another point of discussion that should be brought up when we do street selection, is also type of pavement construction the community wants. We did get a lot of complaints about, you know, the slurry seals. They are, you know, they're not brand-new asphalt. Brand-new asphalt you put down, there should be no shedding on it at all. A surface treatment like micro-surface or a slurry seal, it is meant to shed. So when people see this material coming off the very top, that is normal part of the process. But people aren't, people don't understand a lot of times that this is not, not brand-new asphalt. They see, you know, it's painted black, they think it's brand-new asphalt. There's vastly different conditions that, and cost, frankly, that if you want to do more new asphalt, you can do probably only a tenth of the same area as a surface treatment, as you said.
Thank you for explaining that, because this, these questions do come up quite a bit. And kind of the last, and not getting into the funding, which I think you adequately explained, thank you, is Mount Air Parkway, I know that the HOA, I've had some calls from that district, the HOA was serving their members. And so we are restructuring or we're as the existing, or are we, there was some consideration about making it a two-lane rather than a four?
Yeah, so we did receive a request, and I've put some of that information out in the, the city manager's weekly report, but no change has been made to the plans currently. The plans are to replace as-is, the existing striping. The HOA did do some polling within their membership. The numbers, they still plan on providing me the final numbers, so I won't go into all of the sort of preliminary details I got, but I would say overall, they probably did not get as much feedback or responses as the number of membership there. So that's one concern, and then I don't know if it was a, a very big majority one way or, you know, toward changing it. So I do think they need to do a little bit more work internally. And then if that's something they want to continue to pursue, that, and the city then gets involved, we would need to do more outreach to make sure that people are well aware. The last thing I want to do is, people complain after it's striped, that they didn't know. It may, at that point, you've spent the money. So I think it's key that everyone knows what's going to happen if it is going to change. And, but at this time, the city staff is pursuing it as a replacing kind. When would the, when would a decision need to be made to make that change in conjunction with the schedule that's currently there? It will probably need to be made in the next three to, you know, three to six months, depending. I believe this is also a federally funded project, so it has to go through a review through some outside agencies like Caltrans and CCTA. But the change of the striping is probably not pertinent to what they would require, so it really is a decision of the, the city. It is also an item that I feel if, if the council would like it to be brought back to the council as a discussion item, you know, potentially for public feedback, that would be appropriate, too, to give any opportunity to make that decision. Normally, you know, replacing as-is, I think is a pretty routine staff decision, but to change it from four lanes to two lanes, I think there would be definitely some opinions in the community about it. So we, we could, in terms of changing it on the plans, it's relatively straightforward. It doesn't take much time. It's more about the outreach and making sure that's the right decision, that the, the city and that Dana Hill's neighborhood would like to have done. Is there any significant cost difference between the two striping patterns? There would be some additional cost because some of the elements being discussed are bike lanes. So the green paint you see in a lot of communities now is very expensive, just to let you know. Now, you don't have to use it, you know, you try to use it sparingly, but it's mostly for conflict zones. So I wouldn't put it at every driveway, there's so many driveways along it, but usually at the approach of major inters, or intersections, street intersections would be an appropriate place. In my past experience, the cheaper green paint, there. In my past experience, the cheaper green paint, there, there's a certain requirement that it has to have like a, like a sandpaper-like quality that has a roughness so that bikes don't slip on it. And it also has to have a certain reflectivity, so there's a baseline cost. But even within that, generally, the more expensive stuff stays, doesn't wear away as fast and the maintenance cost is lower compared to something that's cheaper. So it does add cost if the city wanted to pursue it.
Okay. And again, this was, I had several residents say people are just flying up and down that, going 50 miles an hour, and I know we've done some traffic mitigating and, but, so there were some concerns about that. So I don't know, do you think it's worth, all of you, bringing it back?
I think we need to get the community, that specific community, much more involved to get their take on it. But it's, I mean, if we have, would you, three to six months, we have a little bit of time.
Okay.
So if we don't use StreetSaver, what would be the selection criteria?
Well, StreetSaver, just to give you background, is a program that's purchased through MTC. So MTC actually gives most local agencies a grant or an incentive to use that system. Essentially, I think it's like 80% of the cost is covered by MTC. Now, a city could do its own rating process. You are required, MTC would, in terms of getting funding, either you be part of StreetSaver or you have your own system. A city this size, it's probably not likely you'd create your own system, but doesn't mean you have to go with exactly those recommendations. I would say you utilize StreetSaver, the cost is relatively small. But then if there's other factors that you would like to consider in street selection, that should be done on a policy level at either a whole, you know, council or a subcommittee is what I would, I have seen in other communities when they've done projects, you know.
So then it would be like us picking streets? Or would there be recommendations?
No.
I'm just not clear how it would, how that would actually happen.
No, what I would recommend and, you know, you know, I would recommend you set policy that we would then bring a set of streets that meet that policy. For example, if 50% of the dollars you want to spend are on surface treatment and 50% of the dollars are on heavier rehabilitation, then we could give you the best set of streets for each of those categories. And then, you know, we would present that to the council. Or like I mentioned, in terms of maintenance, or sort of economy of scale or.
There's a couple of ways we can go about it. So would you recommend that we move away then from StreetSaver into alternate methodology as you suggest?
I would recommend you, you, you first understand what StreetSaver is going to give you, which I gave you the very basic flavor, and then you, you tweak it to what your, your particular city's needs are or priorities. A good example, another good example is if you have a much higher priority on arterials, like, you know, I worked in a community where they stopped repaving residential's because they didn't have enough money and you just do arterials and collectors. That's a very big issue or big change. I'm not suggesting that Clayton needs to do that, but those are the type of things of where you can basically scale or weight certain priorities a certain way. And I would recommend that, I would like to hear from the council, how would you like the streets? Because I'm sure you get the question, why my street versus not someone else's street? And then we could also develop a priority list of, you know, or overall, you come up with a rotation, you know, if you could look at on a 10-year cycle, you feel like you can do all the streets, every street's going to get repaved every 10 years or maybe whatever, 12 years, then you could at least set up a very consistent cycle of which streets or what neighborhoods are going to be done.
If, if I might jump in, I think we're getting a little off topic and that could be something that could come back as a future agenda item in terms of priority and how to use StreetSaver or not.
Sure. Let me, let me just indulge me for one moment. If you were to do specifically regarding this agenda item and the streets that were suggested, if you were to take the, would these be the ones that you would recommend upon your assessment? Or is the, or is this essentially just a carryover without like you evaluating?
I did not do a separate evaluation versus the entire system for this. It was a carryover from the last list. Now, what I would say in general, the streets that were in this list is a good mixture. From what I've heard, Mitchell Canyon Road is a road that definitely needs some work and some of the other neighborhoods that have already received treatments, this would complete a few areas. So I think it's appropriate, but I did not do a specific analysis on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on item D? Thank you. All right, so with that then, I think we've addressed each of the items and I would take public comment on the consent calendar. If there's anyone that has any public comment on the consent calendar, now's the time. I do see several and Janet, feel free to promote.
Howard, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Maybe I would suggest that we roll to the next person and come back to Mr. Geller.
Okay, I will move on to Rosie. Rosie, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted.
Yes, please go ahead.
I just, I have a, just a comment. This is Rosie Straka, by the way, I'm 25-year resident, I have Clayton in the Peacock Creek neighborhood, and I'm also a 25-year volunteer. Just now, when Councilmember Diaz said that his city-sponsored car show costs $1,200, $1,200, I thought I heard him wrong. Looking at the money that we raised for Clayton Pride last year for many of the same services, the permits, insurance, police, road barricades and so forth, our cost was $18,000, $18,000. Why is that? This seems extremely lopsided and I think that Councilmember Cloven is right to ask to see the car show receipts, if you will. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Basam. Basam, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Basam, here in Moreno Drive in Regency, regarding the car show. Last week, I presented receipts regarding a city event versus non-city events and explained how, with documents, how Mr. Diaz's event is not a city event. So just his deflecting, saying it's a city event, it's just weak excuse. In addition, Mr. Diaz, in the past years of running his car show, never asked the city council, and the record is there, for any waiver. He just used his influence, went to the counter and got a waiver if added it. Third, Mr. Diaz arguing the car show is a violation of the Brown Act. He can't argue against himself. I urge the mayor to ask to exclude Mr. Diaz of any conversation regarding the car show. And if this doesn't happen, I will be filing a Brown Act complaint against the council and the mayor and Mr. Diaz. You claim integrity, please bring integrity to the city council. Thank you.
Howard, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, well, I think we'll call it for Mr. Geller. If he'd like to make a comment, then this is the challenge with technical difficulties. There's no other public comment, then I would close. Sorry.
And Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thank you. All right, then I will close the consent calendar and look for a motion on items B through E.
I'll make a motion for items B through E of the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Janet, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. That closes item four and we've done item five already because we switched the order. And next is reports from our city manager. And I did not do this at the beginning, but I will do this now. I would introduce our brand-new, brand-newly minted city manager, Mr. Rep. Prubula, awesome, who comes to us from the city of Benicia. We are very happy to have you. If you, you're welcome to introduce yourself, but you've already begun work. I think you started yesterday, but you've started well before that as well, just getting familiar with the community. So a warm welcome and thank you for, for joining us.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Pardon again my hoarse voice. This is what happens when you take your daughter to Disneyland before you start as the city manager. You know, it's, it's been a joy so far. I have immersed myself a little bit in the community even before we started. Staff has been great. I'm just very excited about what we can accomplish here in the coming years and look forward to it. One thing I want to report, I want to thank Ron Brunel, who was the interim city manager for three months. He did a great job kind of moving things forward in that role and is going to stay on in a separate scope of work for me for just a few weeks, a little bit for the transition, but mostly to do an additional depth review on the organizational analysis work that was done by MRG, just to give me a little bit more depth on some of the information within that report to help me as I bring forward some recommendations to council for things we need to do relative to staffing. And so I'm excited that he's staying on. It helps the transition. He has been wonderful even thus far and made it very smooth and, yeah, it's just, it's very exciting. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of conversations, the community we need to have, but I'm excited and energetic to get started with those and have them in the coming months and years to come.
Thank you. I, I am too also glad that Mr., well grateful for Mr. Brunel's service and I'm glad that you were able to work that out. It is something that I think I suggested and I think it would, it's going to be a great shoring up of some of the information provided, so I look forward to, to that report, especially really developing scope of, of services that the city provides. So that would be great and hopefully that transition goes very smoothly. Next is item seven, public hearings. We do not have any. And item eight is action items. This is receiving the FY '21 and '22 Annual Citizens Oversight Report by the Trails and Landscape Committee, the TLC. I don't know if you are kicking us off, or are we turning it over to the chair?
You can turn it right over the chair.
All right. Did you practice that?
I did, thank you. Thank you, Council, for having us here this evening. So I do have some slides that Janet is preparing for us. So just to give a little bit of background about who we are, it's been a little inactive in previous years, so it'll bring everybody up to speed. I only brought 42 slides, so I think we'll get everyone really prepared to move forward, okay? So I am, excuse me? Yes, I am Erin Bennett. I am the Chair of the Trails and Landscape Committee. So we are the financial oversight for Measure H. Next slide, please, Janet. So I have a, we have a group of 10 citizens that are members of the Trails and Landscape Committee. And the Trails and Landscape Committee oversees the budgets for the Landscape Maintenance District. And so just a little bit of context for the public on what the Landscape Maintenance District is, is it's a parcel tax, it was created by a parcel tax for the operation and maintenance of public landscaped areas, originally on the ballot in 2007 and then passed again in 2016 for an additional 10 years. So this parcel tax will expire in 2027. This covers some arterial and specified roadways, medians and parkways, the, the plantings and irrigation in those, the trail systems, non-native invasive weed abatement, weed abatement in open trails and spaces, landscape and turf irrigation, and of course, our beautiful fountain. What is not covered, just so everyone's aware, we don't do the city parks. So that's not in our budget. Next slide. So if you do want autographs, there are the folks that are on the committee. We meet about every two or three months. It's a nice quiet meeting, but we do talk a little bit about how we're spending our money, what the plans are, and we take a look back at the funds spent to date. So we can go to the next slide. So this team has been, this committee has been in effect since, we've been together since March of 2022, so we've been together now for about a year. When we came in, when we came in onto the committee, we have a couple of years of annual reports to catch up on because COVID, we had some limited activity and the TLC itself was inactive. So I've got a very brief summary here. There's lots and lots of numbers everywhere, so this is a very brief summary, just taking a look at fiscal year '21, the beginning fund balance, what revenues came in through the tax and interest, what was spent, and then the ending fund balance. That carries over then into 2022, revenue there, expenditures and ending fund balance. Just a couple of notes, we did meet last week and we updated some of the numbers there, so we're going to probably pull the '22 annual report and redo it now that we have a new finance director. We've got some numbers that we need to update in there, so. So we go to the next slide, we'll dig into these a little bit and just talk about the highlights. In addition to routine maintenance, which Jim and his team do a lot of, there were also some accomplishments. They completed the multi-year downtown planters, which are gorgeous, if you guys see those during some of the events downtown. And they did some scheduled replacement and upgrade of irrigation controls as part of a, a longer-term ongoing project. So the number referenced in the previous slide with expenditures, I've broken down some of the big hitters in that bucket. We've got salaries and benefits, water service, weed abatement and tree trimming, everything there that's 9% of the spending or more. But they did, we did spend less than budgeted during that year due to staffing issues and drought conditions. We're not replacing plants and things when it is, when we're going to lose them to a drought. Next slide is fiscal year '22, same format accomplishment. The big one here, so you see the expenditure went up significantly this year. We spent a lot more money on tree trimming and lifting the canopies. I mean, great foresight by the team because we had some of the big crazy, what do we call, atmospheric rivers and things, and so we didn't lose the trees there, but they did a lot of work lifting and trimming those trees and so a lot of the expenditures fell into that bucket. And again, continuing the upgrade of the irrigation controls as part of that ongoing project and some native plantings, trying to force out weeds, if you will, and prevent erosion, so. So I've got the same buckets listed there for expenditures. Tree trimming is a new one there. We talked a little bit about that increased cost there. And again, we did spend less than budgeted due to drought conditions, continuing through 2022. And my last slide, I really didn't have 42, I was just teasing. Looking ahead, thinking about what we're, what we're doing, just taking a look at our budgets, the operating costs currently require most of the revenue. So the things I've, I've noted here, salaries, weed abatements, et cetera, so it doesn't leave us a ton of room for project improvements. We have formed a subcommittee and it's interesting because I've heard you guys talking about it with the roads and some other things. We brought that upon ourselves as well to put a committee together to do some strategic asset maintenance, making sure that the projects that we're putting on the, on the budget are the ones that we should be doing. And so, you know, we kind of paused some projects that were already on the budget and said, "Let's, let's assess and make sure those are the projects we should be doing." So again, good foresight because now Carden A Trail, that's the next bullet, we've got some significant storm and erosion damage there that's going to. some significant storm and erosion damage there that's going to, it's going to be pretty costly and that we're going to need to take care of soon. And just my last reminder is that this parcel tax does expire in 2027, so we have two opportunities for a ballot measure in 2024 and 2026. And that is, that is my summary.
Thank you.
Any questions? You're welcome.
That's excellent. Are there questions for Ms. Bennett? Chairman?
Hello, Ms. Bennett. Kim Trupiano, I do have, you answered almost all my questions, so thank you.
Perfect. You're welcome.
This was great. Short and sweet and to the point, I love it. Just one question regarding the Strategic Asset Management Plan. Will we be able to see that soon?
Oh, it's a top secret. I'm very sorry. No, absolutely. So we, soon, probably not. We've had our first meeting, I'm not on that subcommittee meeting, but we're working with the city engineer and the new city manager now to work on that. And so we've had our initial meeting to talk about that, but it hasn't kicked off yet.
Okay. And then have you, my last question is, you know, obviously, we're ending fiscal year 2022, 2023. Is there any sense of how we're looking in that?
So we had our first look last week. So we're waiting on some updated information. We've asked staff to forecast out a couple more years. We do have a little bit of buffer, if you will, in the budget, but we also have this big expenditure coming up with Cardenay Trail. So that's our wild card, if you will.
So does our staff normally do the forecasting several years out?
I don't know.
I'll jump in, since I sat in on the Sustainability Plan Subcommittee, which was on May 1st, and there is $30,000 that was set aside from the LMD, the Layton Landscape Maintenance District budget. That happened last year for this year for that group, and it's actually Larry's team, so the city engineer's team working with the Subcommittee is to put that together. He can hire whoever he wants to if it's not him, but there's $30,000 set aside from the LMD to work on this.
Okay, and I'm sorry, who's going to do, is that Angeline is going to do that or Larry?
It's Larry can decide who's going to do that.
So the forecasting, I think, is Angeline, right? So we were looking at the numbers and she was going to work on the forecasting, that was our suggestion. But then the Subcommittee mentioned that, yes.
Correct.
Larry's the plan.
Yes, but we can't do anything until we get updated numbers from Angeline, so yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just as a matter of practice, kind of moving forward, for any of our districts, especially the general fund, we will always want to do a level of forecasting, whether that's only a few years or up to a five-year forecast is generally what I have done in the past that has been helpful in policy discussions. It's by no means to be a crystal ball when we do these things, but it's to give a sense of general trends and sensitivity analysis so the respective policymakers can essentially make good policy decisions knowing what is kind of sitting out in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. I don't have a question.
I don't have any questions, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for joining us, and I really appreciate the report. As our city manager is trailing Marlon Brando.
Okay, I've got a question or two.
Oh, did you have a question? Okay, sorry.
I was doing some addition while you guys were talking, and I wanted to know, on the expenditures, in both years, they seem to be below the amount of money available.
Correct.
Why?
Because we couldn't spend it fast enough. No. So we had, we had mentioned in there, and we've talked about this with Jim, so the expenditures were less than budgeted, which is why there's ending balance. And a lot of that was due to, we're not replanting plants during a drought season. We're not, there were some projects that we put on hold as the, as the committee to say, let's make sure this is the priority, and so those projects haven't been completed.
So does this mean we have some additional revenue available to update our landscaping needs?
No.
No?
No. So the costs of, the operating expenses, the costs associated with those have risen pretty significantly, our temporary worker salaries, things like that. So we do have some money in the budget, but we're holding for Cardenay Trail. We've got a little bit of a placeholder in there, looking forward to next year, and we're trying to figure out how much that's going to cost because we think that's going to be a pretty big expense.
Okay, I need to think that through.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to join us at any meeting.
Thank you.
And there's also details, more details in the staff report. Vice Mayor Diaz? I'll wait.
I think we're having some technical challenges.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Diaz? Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes?
There are more details in--
I'm adjusting my microphone.
I understand. I understand. There are more details in the staff report that show what the revenues that are coming in versus the expenditures going out that she was mentioning. They just weren't in her actual presentation because it would have been redundant.
Thank you.
Actually, I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Tillman for spearheading this or being the liaison, and thank you, Ms. Bennett. You and your crew have been on top of it and fully into the numbers and the actual design of this committee as it was supposed to be and has been and has not been, actually, I should say, for the last few years. And I really, really appreciate you and your team's effort. Thank you.
We get really excited about the prayers.
All right. I would take public comment on this item if there are, I have to, you know, we do that. If anyone would like to offer public comment, now's the time. Do we have anyone online that would like to?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will close public comment. Is there any, any further discussion here on item 8A? I will take silence as a no and close item 8A and move on to council items number nine. This is limited to requests for future meetings. Does anyone have anything that they would like to request? Okay. Then I will close item nine and move on to council reports. Councilmember Trupiano, would you like to kick us off tonight?
I'll kick us off. It's funny, when you finally do this, I had a busy couple of weeks, so I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. Of course, I've met with our new city manager a couple of times now. Thank you, Brett, and welcome. We're delighted that you're here with us. I've also, of course, met with Ron Brunel, our interim. The Clayton Community Library Foundation did have its monthly board meeting, and they're, you know, they recently received a grant for $250,000 from the county, $50,000 a year. So they're doing some forecasting of their own, looking at a five-year scope of work, projects, programs. And so we were, we kind of had part two of putting things into bucket, is it going to be year one, year two, so on and so forth. And now, Brett, that you're here, they're ready to schedule some time with us and the county representatives to have a meeting. I did attend the mayor's conference on May 4th in San Ramon, and it was good to see the mayor of San Ramon back, and we had great presentation by Tri Valley Links. I also had an opportunity, I sit on the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy Board, I'm the vice chair, and the executive director, Abby Faitman, gave myself and another council member from Oakley a hiking tour. We went up to Krieger Peak. I don't know if anybody's been up there where the radio towers are. Anyway, it was lovely, and it was a wonderful day, and lots of wildflowers, but she really wanted to give us the lay of the land, to see the scope of all the land that they are preserving and what's in the conservancy, what belongs to East Bay Parks, what belongs to private ranchers and private landowners. And I did want to mention that they are, they're putting together a public advisory committee, and they have one spot left for somebody who's like, just a resident, nature lover, advocate for conserving land. And I do have a little packet with me tonight. I'd be happy to send out more information on that, and the deadline is August 1st to apply for that. And they're just a wonderful organization. We had our first concert in The Grove on Saturday, and I was tired after running around with those money jugs for three hours, but I really, kudos, not just to our entire city staff because everybody touches this particular event, but in particular to Jim Warburton and his maintenance team. The Grove looked amazing and was really beautiful, and the kids were having fun in the splash pad, which is on again, and it was a wonderful evening, and we raised some money. Janet, thank you for that information today. I just want to let you know, the next concert is May 27th at 6:00 PM with Rod the Mod. He's a Rod Stewart tribute band, and we will have inserts with the entire concert lineup in the Pioneer on this Friday. And two last things, we had a budget and audit special meeting just yesterday, we were here, and that was to review our master fee schedule as proposed by Nitesh Sharma from Gov Invest, and we will have our next budget and audit meeting regularly scheduled next Monday, the 22nd, at 4:00 PM. That's it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Diaz, would you like to?
Thank you. As you know, I'm the council representative of the County Connection, and we had the Administration and Finance Committee of note, I want to, that was on the 3rd of May. I want to make note of the fact that through some federal funding, the County Connection is going to be offering door-to-door service for those people that need to go to a doctor appointment or some other medical appointment where they can't use their own transportation. One of the shuttles, similar to the ones we use at the Art and Wine, will pick them up at their front door and take them to the, to the medical appointment and retrieve them and bring them back. That'll be coming not this year, but next year, but we just got the funding for that and we're beginning the plans over there for that. I also attended the mayor's conference. Again, Dave Hudson, it's a miracle for those of you that were not aware of it, but he had a very significant stroke and is now back to leading the city of San Ramon, doing an excellent job. On the 7th, I attended a Clayton Historical Social Event, a dinner with them, and again, our former, our first mayor, 102-years-old Bob Hoyer, was in Grant's style that night. Then on the 11th, I went over to Pittsburgh to attend their car show. Their car show is significantly larger than ours, 200-plus automobiles, plus they have live music. We only get to about 25 to 30 cars at the maximum at our car show, and relative to the expense, all of our money goes to pay for the disc jockey that we have that provides the 50s, 60s music. Unlike them, they have a full seven-piece band over there that's playing in all of the cars. It's amazing to go over there and see that. On the 12th, I had my final wrap-up meeting with the former interim city manager, Ron Brunel, and we wrapped up some things that were remaining to be handed off to the new city manager. On the 13th, Cochrane's in The Grove, had a big day down there. On the 14th, I hope every mother had a wonderful day. It's a very special occasion for our family, but unfortunately, my wife is not there to enjoy it, but our daughter, who is, presented us with two great grandchildren. It was a great day. Monday, somehow we overlooked it, but it was Peace Officers Memorial Day, and I know that the chief is going to plan some event later this week to recognize the law enforcement community here in Clayton. And then finally, today, I had my first meeting with the new city manager. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mine is kind of brief. Let's see. Again, I'll piggyback off of Vice Mayor Diaz and say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. And I had a few meetings with our new city manager. One was right after our last city council meeting, and then again today. I also attended the mayor's conference, so I'll be brief and not be redundant here. I attended the Trails and Landscape Committee meeting, which was last Monday. Chair Bennett already gave an update on that. On the 11th, I also attended the Cal State East Bay Division meeting, and we actually had, I don't remember if you mentioned this one or not, but Congressman Guerra Mindy was a guest speaker, and there were a couple of great items that he actually brought to our attention. One was that municipalities need to be aware that there are clawbacks for ARPA that the House has already passed, and he said that we should be concerned about those and keep an eye on it, just in case the federal government decides they want to clawback some of the money that they gave us. It's not funny, but it's frightening. But he did want to make us aware that that happened. And then he also mentioned that there are some grant-writing coalitions with neighboring cities. I'm sure that our city manager knows about these already, but he did mention that if you kind of collaborate with neighboring cities, you can hire grant managers. Alameda County, he mentioned as an example and shared that they have resources and that when you have a coalition, those are looked at, looked upon more favorably, and that he'd be willing to write a letter of recommendation should our city or any of the cities that were on the call like to do this. In addition, I had several Clayton Pride Parade meetings. One was with Sergeant Shaw yesterday, just to make sure that we discussed all of the logistics for the barricades and cones, et cetera. And then I also talked to Jim Warburton as well, just to make sure that we were all on tap for that. And also had meetings with Ron, and if he's listening out there and gets bored and wants to watch a meeting, thank you again for all your service. That's it. Oh, and I had a milestone-style, I can't even speak this evening, a milestone birthday last week. I turned 50, and I own it. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Cloven?
Thanks, appreciate that. Last Thursday, I chaired the Transpac meeting, last meeting on Zoom. We have decided in June that we're going back to in-person meetings in Pleasant Hill at their City Hall facilities, and we're looking forward to getting back in person and doing it like the old-school way. It was an interesting meeting because we actually talked about our work plan, what we're planning on accomplishing this year, transportation-wise for Central Contra Costa County, as well as talked about the budget associated with thereof. We'll be approving that work plan and budget in our June meeting in person. But one of the great presentations that happened was a discussion of the draft Marsh Creek Road Multi-Use Trail feasibility study. And the plan is to create a non-motorized vehicle, basically that would traverse from downtown Clayton all the way through Brentwood to Oakley. And they, was a presentation about what that might look like. And if you want to see a zigzag, loop-de-loop, weird-looking plan, that's it. And there's a lot of reasons for that because there's a lot of public land out there, but as Kim mentioned, there's a lot of private land, and if you were a private rancher out there who had private land, why would you want somebody zipping by on a bicycle through your property? So there's going to be a lot of feasibility changing of how the actual bike path, jogging path would go from Clayton Pumpkin Patch, from our city limits, all the way out to Brentwood. But that's, that's, that's the general plan. It's non-motorized, it's not on the road, so this is, this is strictly for, you know, pedestrian vehicles like bikes and jogging. And it's interesting, and it's going to be a long work and long slog and very expensive in three different areas. I can make sure you get the link if you're interested in that, so we can post it. I think it's fascinating. I did go to the Constance Park on Friday, or Saturday. I really appreciated the efforts you put into it, Kim and Jim, Councilmembers Trupiano and Diaz. It was a fun night, good, great weather, and a lot, a lot of fun. Spent a lot of time with the Pride Committee getting ready for the June 4th, Sunday, June 4th parade. Getting a lot of interest, we've already got over 40 entrants that are looking at participating that. And again, great way to bring business to our restaurants downtown. If it's anything like last year, they were booked and completely filled. I know Maresse just kicked took us in their bar bills because it was very, it was, it was, it was very fun, and the joy in The Grove was just phenomenal. And I want to thank also our outgoing interim city manager, Ron, who's a gentleman, a scholar, to keep the wheels on the, on the bus while we, we made it through the last few months, and looking forward to seeing what our new city manager can do with his confidence in-- And looking forward to seeing what our new city manager can do with his confidence and his skills. So thanks.
Thank you. Let's see, so I think I had a lot of overlapping meetings here, but you know, Budget Audit Committee met last, yesterday. And it will meet again on Monday as we ramp up towards the end of budget season for next fiscal year. I've met a few times with Brett and of course Ron, attended the mayor's conference as well. I thought that was a great presentation and great to see Dave as well. And then I would just like to announce, I think it is on our website already, but we will have two openings for the Planning Commission that, and we are accepting applications now for a term that begins in July of this year for two years. So if you are interested, feel free to fill out an application. And that is, that concludes my report. We do not have any closed session and while I will adjourn this meeting, I will immediately pass, pass the meeting over to the Chair of the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District.
And could we take just like a two-minute recess before we get into that? Would that be okay with everyone?
You're driving. We've, we've got to take it, she called for a two-minute recess.
Check.
Okay, I'd like to call the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District meeting to order at, what is that, 8:37? 8:35, thank you, Jim. And Janet, will you call?
Board Member Juan?
Here.
Board Member Tillman?
Here.
Board Member Diaz?
Yep.
Vice Chair Clovin?
Here.
Chair Trupiano?
Here.
And do we have any public comment on non-agenda items? Janet, do we have anyone?
Chair Trupiano, I have not received any speaker cards and I do not have any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Then we will go to the consent calendar, which is, or minutes. And are we asking for a public comment on, yeah, public comment on the consent calendar? Do we have anyone?
Chair Trupiano, I do not have any hands raised or speaker cards, speaker cards on this item.
I'd move approval.
Second?
Move approval. He's second.
Okay.
Board Member Juan?
Aye.
Board Member Trupiano, I'm sorry, Board Member Tillman?
Aye.
Board Member Diaz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clovin?
Aye.
Chair Trupiano?
Aye.
Okay, public hearings, we have none. And our action item this evening is a discussion of expenditures to be budgeted for fiscal year 2024 by our city manager, Larry Thies. So Larry, take it away.
Good evening, this is your GAD manager, Larry Thies. This item was, well, this is a continuation of a discussion at the March 21st GAD meeting. At that meeting, the board requested additional information as to budgeting of items to, I would say sufficiently run the, the GAD district. So we brought that item back tonight and we have Cristiano Mello, who was at the, the March meeting with BSK, who does, is a subconsultant to our firm and provides the geotechnical and the field analysis. A lot of the estimates provided for specific services and monitoring, or even some capital projects, were asked of BSK to put together a estimate. So that is attached to your staff report. I'll briefly go over and I encourage the board to have a discussion, provide feedback on what next steps would be and how would you like to proceed. The general overview, as was mentioned in the previous meeting, is that the, I would say the GAD is severely underfunded at this time for the level of services that are needed. As a recap, approximately, and I'm going to talk off of the upcoming fiscal year 24 budget. And the annual assessment revenue is projected to be around $49,500. That is a little bit up from the $47,000 from last year, basically for a CPI increase. What's summarized in the staff report is the basic baseline expenses for putting on the meetings that we have to have the engineer report and to do the annual assessments is roughly 40, I'm sorry, $27,000. So over half of what the current assessments brought in. So based off of those numbers, the remaining projected dollars is around $21,000, $22,000 for actual field work, engineering, maintenance, you know, the, the, doing the work in the field. There is still about $50,000 in the Presley Fund, which is a settlement associated with the GAD, that we are in the upcoming budget process, proposing that that money be transferred into fiscal year 24. And at this time, that adds, you know, that $50,000 adds up to $71,000 for services that can be allocated. We have put together a budget with the Finance Department to specify that the, not only the baseline expenses, but the recommended services that still fit within that budget of roughly 100 and, well, there's $100,000 in those two funds and there's some carryover dollars from this last fiscal year, which our current budget will be $125,000 for fiscal year 24. However, that still is not sufficient to be able to properly operate this GAD district. So we took the step back from that initial analysis that I just described and determined what are the costs that are needed to address certain things we know of today. Also, long-term maintenance and the amount of dollars to properly or to sufficiently run this district. And you'll see those expenditures starting on, listed on the staff report of page, end of page two. And I would point out that it starts with routine maintenance such as ditch clearing, weed abatement. But those are actually currently being funded out of the Landscape Maintenance District and those will continue to be budgeted out of the Landscape Maintenance District. So those were not included into the GAD budget this upcoming year because it's already covered. The Landscape Maintenance District overlaps this GAD areas in this particular situation. Starting on page three lists the inspections, the monitoring, the expected engineering consultation and capital or one-time capital-type projects for inclinometers, pyzometers, also V-ditch replacement, storm drain pipe replacement. The other element that any, a good, healthy assessment district should have is an operating reserve. So that is generally about 50% of your annual operating cost, which I assume is roughly about $250,000. So taking 50% is 125. And then the other sort of larger number is, since this is a Hazard Abatement District, anticipation is there will be some event at some time that the GAD will have to deal with. So you need to have a reserve to address that particular risk happening. So at this time, I, I recommended about a $2 million reserve for a 10-year period. So hopefully you could save that amount of money in 10 years. And if an event happens and then, you know, 10 years from now, that you'd have at least $2 million to be able to try to address some landslide event. Obviously, the size and scale could depend on whatever the situation is, but that is, I believe, a reasonable amount. It's not a specific risk analysis on the district by any means. It was more of trying to identify what's something that could be attained and also an amount that could be used to hopefully, hopefully event doesn't happen in 10 years and you can keep saving and you'll have $4 million in 20 years. And that was the intention. But when you look and add all these costs up, the summary is, you know, the district should be collecting on average of about $460,000 to $510,000 a year. That's 10 times as much as it is collecting today. So that's quite a bit more, I recognize that. But in terms of the scale and size that's consistent with other GADS in the area, it's probably still a little lower than a few of the more recent GADS, to give you the scale. I would say the last thing before turning over to questions and if you have any specific questions from BSK's specific estimates, is that the board should consider, you know, in order to meet this level of service that is being recommended, or some level of level of service maybe lower than this, that you need to pursue an increase in assessments. And that is a, you know, a ballot process that is, requires a 50% vote that is based on a weighted average of the assessment. Not everyone is assessed the same amount currently in the district. The properties, I would generally say, in the higher up hills are assessed closer to $80 a year, while the homes that are the duets in the lower areas are much lower, down to $25, even $19, I believe, currently. So that gives you a scale. Obviously, the, the, the cost, you know, being 10 times potentially would put you at $250 to $800 for that, you know, if you kept everything sliding together. The Arinda GAD district right now is collecting $3,200 a year per single-family lot. So it's still lower. San Ramon GAD district, which is a much larger, and they have like 12,000 homes, they're closer to about $200 a unit or a single-family home. So that gives you some other scale in terms of where other GADS are at. Both of those have a pretty healthy reserve and their operating budget is larger than what's proposed here, given the scale is different in each of those situations. So I'm happy to take questions and then, like I said, Cristiano's here as well.
Quick procedural question. You had sent us a memo and we're not talking about the content of what you had sent at this time?
Correct, that was a confidential memo.
Okay, thank you. So you meant, you ended your presentation with a description of how an assessment would get increased. Is that, some of the language that was in the agenda was unclear. It says is a mail, like it referenced doing it by mail? Or is it go on the ballot? Or how does that actually work? Can you describe the mechanics?
Because the GAD is a subset of the, the city, typically in the past, a mailed ballot would go through and work with the city clerk because it's not like a county election-type situation. So you would engage, you know, a consultant who does this, like Francisco Associates, who does the assessment report for each year, they're very used to that. They would, they would need to help assist the city if that was the decision to pursue it. And then there's obviously public hearing process, a few other things, you know, there's procedural items. And then typically it's a mailed ballot to those particular property owners because this is an assessment where, an assessment is relative to, it's a tax on property essentially. These properties are benefiting, not necessarily the difference between people versus property. And so those particular property owners, which is already identified in the tax assessor role, would be part of the ballot. Or if the city wanted to consider adding additional properties into the GAD, that would be another area that ballots would be sent to.
So then you mentioned the 50%. So is that the threshold of respondents?
So before we keep, I just want to clarify, we're talking about the district here and not the city. I know it may seem like a small distinction, but I think it's important for everyone to recognize that that's what we're referring to today.
Yeah, just for the, for the GAD.
Yes.
So would that, is 50% the threshold of respondents that's required? I couldn't, I wasn't sure if I interpreted that correctly.
I don't believe, I'm not an expert, so I'll put, put that out there. I believe 50% is relative to the votes that are received back. I don't, sure if it's relative to how many respond. There could be a threshold, I'm not sure on that particular item. But there definitely needs to be a weighted 50% of folks that are in the district have to approve the increase, the overall increase.
Okay. Do you have a guess as to what that would cost for the city or the district to, to engage in this process?
I do not at this time. I, I think in terms of just the procedural elements and having a consultant go and prepare the necessary paperwork, I'm thinking it's in the $10,000 range, you know, I don't know how many, but that would be the range. But I don't know if there's any effort to educate, to, you can't campaign, obviously, but if there's more efforts to outreach to the community or to the district members, that would probably be additional cost.
And would the district then bear the cost of this effort?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, cool. The other question, you listed, I, first, I forgot to say at the beginning, thank you very much for putting this together. This has been a multi-year request and I think that this does cover, so I will not be requesting at the end of this meeting another item. But I do believe that this addresses all of the But I do believe that this addresses all of the, the requests that we made and the ask, both historically and from the prior meetings. So thank you for that, I think it's very comprehensive. Regarding the activities listed, obviously, I think in its current state, we, we do not have sufficient funding to perform what is listed. If we were to, what would it look like if we were to perform activities and prioritize just the parcels that the city owns? Because we do own parcels within the district. So if we were to part, well, two-part question. If we were to prioritize the parcels that we own, and then if our goal was to mitigate risks that those parcels present, what would that look like in terms of activities that, you know, is there a way to carve out those activities?
Generally speaking, most of these costs, I would say ninety percent of it is within city-owned properties. Because the maintenance, the monitoring, those items are in open space parcels, those are all owned by the city. And so, there's very few items that require going on private property, per se. So, I would generally say most of this is within the city sphere or ownership at this time.
Let me, let me, let me rephrase then. What if we, if we were to prioritize particular properties that we deemed were in greater need of activity, then would it be possible to, to address work directed in that manner?
So Mayor, if I could step in, I, I think it's important to know, the city as an entity doesn't pay into the GAD, and so when we're talking about city-owned property, that's really something your city council would address as part of either a budget process or an agenda item. And so I think, I think although it's related to the area of the district, I think the decision point is really more of a city council discussion, decision on those general fund dollars than it is a district board decision.
And so you are looking for direction on prioritization?
Yes, I, I believe that. At this time, as I mentioned at the beginning, we are budgeting our expenditures within the dollars that we know, the current assessment and the Presley Fund transfer. So, and as I mentioned, with some carryover dollars from the previous fiscal year, it's about one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four. But clearly, if we spend all those dollars, because we are still low, too, we're below what we need to be at, we'll zero out in the end of twenty-four, and you will then basically have forty-nine, fifty-thousand dollars a year going forward. And as I mentioned, the baseline expenses is roughly twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand. So essentially, you have twenty-one thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars for any engineering, any monitoring, those act, now, we could prioritize those, I think as you were mentioning, Mayor Juan. There are higher priority areas within the GAD open spaces than others. But frankly, with that amount of money, you probably will not be able to look at every, comprehensively look at everything you need to be looking at for that amount of money. You could consider just holding that money for when something does happen, you know, a small-scale event, then you go do a repair, you know, like a basin fills in, or, you know, a V-ditch gets clogged up or needs to be replaced. You could leave it on that. But then you're not looking at anything in the district, right, in terms of eyes on the ground. The cost of eyes on the ground to look at the entirety of the open space parcels near homes, that's the other thing. We already sort of prioritize that element. We're not looking in the middle of the open space where, you know, there's nothing for hundreds of yards, you know, if there's a slide there, I mean, there's a slide, you could see it, you know, if you're driving around on a hill right above the golf course, right, but it's not near any homes, and it's very superficial on the surface. So those aren't, you know, being listed as, hey, go fix this. So, you know, in terms of the dollars for next year, we have a little bit of a bonus with the, the sort of remaining Presley funds. But going forward, you know, I think that the board needs to decide how it wants to proceed in the future, right, you know, in terms of this limited resource and, you know, essentially fifty percent of the dollars, your little, forty percent of the dollars you're collecting can be used for actual work in the, you know, in the field. So that's the kind of scale you're looking at. I wanted to convey that because frankly, you know, any pursuit of an increase in assessments obviously is a process, I get that. And, you know, there's no guarantee that it's going to be approved. But you are, you know, well underfunded going forward, that, you know, you can't even really be looking at the things in the field, let alone deal with what eventually will happen, you know, there is no, the area has known landslides, that something is going to move. Fortunately, you know, you knock on wood that it's not going to happen, you know, soon, but that's the, the case you're in right now.
You list, you list several items for capital or facility replacement, and I think some of these are dam, recent damage that was observed, like the, the drain cleanouts, and I think there is one catch basin that was essentially overrun. What, what amount, or what body of work was included in the FY24 plan that consumes the Presley and the remainder fund that would bring it down to zero? Like, are there still, are there still going to be significant repairs after that point? Or does that?
Yes.
So what, what's included and what's not included in terms of those repairs?
So, you'll see this when we bring the final engineering report for the GAD, because that's when you approve the actual budget. But as we've been going through, it's an iterative process. So, what we have currently put into the fiscal year twenty-four with the Presley funds is prioritizing not only the baseline services to, you know, to maintain the district and collecting, is to put in for inspection and monitoring of about forty-five thousand dollars. And that also would require the actual field monitoring. So the field monitoring is probably the most important, and that's at twenty-three, twenty-fourth, twenty-three, five. And that would cover some of the inclinometer monitoring, not all of the, the ones that would be required. And some additional legal services, because it's clearly going to be potentially, you know, more meanings. That was just going to be increased by a few thousand dollars to four thousand dollars. And, let's see. So the forty-five thousand in engineering for the field inspection and potential engineering to address any particular small-scale items. Then there's twenty-three thousand of the actual field monitoring, that's the inclinometer, and then fifteen thousand potentially for additional GAD management, essentially my time of, you know, if you were to pursue more of a, a vote or getting a subconsultant on, on board. Now, that doesn't assume that's going to happen, but if there's going to be large, more discussions, that there's more GAD management dollars in there. That's what's been currently put into the budget, plus a twenty-thousand-dollar amount set aside for a small repair budget. And then there's still, you know, a transfer of dollars from the GAD to the general fund that would be for city clerk services, general admin, that covers, you know, the actual GAD services that, the GAD functions that require other city employee services at this time.
What about the items that were identified in the prior BSK report? You know, they, they had these, the, there were the pictures of the, you know, the catch basins overrun, and we had like the, I forget what they were called, but adjacent to the V-ditch, there was the crevasse forming. Like, does the, does the, does the FY24 budget contemplate repairing any of those?
I think we can shift, depending on how much monitoring you want to do, relative to a fix, I think you can shift those dollars, there's the dollars available. I would say it would, it might be difficult to do both, depending on, you know, how much effort is needed to actually do the capital work. But this is probably the last kind of opportunity to do something a little bit more, right, because the Presley fund amount is set aside there. We would have to look, we drill down on that dollar amount and could segregate if we did that, how much monitoring could be done. But right now, this is very kind of high-level, we, we assume just amounts for monitoring at this point. We haven't looked at specific projects.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess I just, when would be, when is the appropriate time to kind of make that decisioning around how we choose to allocate those funds from a district perspective?
I think that it would be, if, if that's what would the board like to pursue, I would bring that back into the final budget discussion when you guys approve the engineer's report for the GAD, because the, the entire budget for fiscal year twenty-four would be in there. So, I could identify those, you know, we think it'll, this particular location will cost, you know, X amount, and then how much we have left over would be used for monitoring, but that might only be able to monitor half the area, for example.
Yeah, and I think it would be, it would be helpful to have kind of that assessment with a prioritization of those items, because, you know, I, I get that monitoring is important, but if we have no funds to do anything with the information of the monitoring, I, I don't know what the value of monitoring if, at the end of the day, we can do nothing about it. So, I, I think that's a judgment call on how we approach, but having that discussion where we have the specific repair items alongside of the others, so we can make those choices, I think that would be helpful.
Understood. I mean, I, I, I understand in the scale of things, it's going to be very difficult to fix anything of much, of substantial cost. I, I would state that looking at those pyzometers and inclinometers do give you a benefit of knowing if something big is going to happen. So, you know, yeah, you might not be able to afford it, but it, there may be some trade-off, right? If you're not looking at all, which to a certain degree, there's not a lot looking right now, you know, then you don't know what could be happening or could happen soon. Now, essentially, most of the time, these issues come up when it gets wet, but it gets wet every year, right? It's just a varying degree amount. So, understanding that if you're not seeing any kind of movement, or if you are seeing movement, at least gives you a heads-up on something. Now, will you have the dollars to do something about it? You might not, I get that.
Can I ask a quick question, really quick, along those, along those same lines? So the field monitoring piece, are we only talking about the inclinometers or the pyzometers? Can you walk me through what exactly field monitoring is for twenty-three, five?
Sure. Well, I, I would encourage folks-
Can I tell you why I'm asking my question?
Sure.
Because it might help. If it's broken, and it's, there's lots of repairs that have to take place up there, we already know some need to be replaced. So are they monitoring areas that are of concern only, or are they looking at additional areas that they, that we necessarily haven't really done anything with? Because I don't want to have to spend money, twenty-three thousand, five-hundred dollars to monitor something that we already know we don't have the money to fix, or that we already know is broken. Doesn't it have to be fixed to monitor it, I guess is what my question is.
Because there's some that are sheared off, right?
Right.
And so there's no, there's no monitoring there.
So what, so now I'll ask my question, what are we field monitoring?
There, there's still plenty of inclinometers that are existing out there that can be monitored. There are two that have sheared off. They are in locations, obviously, of bigger concern, because they sheared off because it moved. So not having additional inclinometers there means you're, you're blind again, right? So that's one element. I also want to clarify, the twenty-three, five was basically what I felt could fit in. The actual amount of doing the, the sort of the, the monitoring you need to do for inclinometers is much higher, it's twice as much as that.
Okay.
So, that was, that was working within the existing budget. But the, the prioritization that BSK came up with are in their attachments of, and it's broken down essentially by doing the monitoring on the surface, right? These are the north area, Key Lock, those are the one and two priorities, Pebble Beach. And then you get down into more of the inclinometers, would be three and four. And then five and six, generally speaker, put the new mon, uh, two, the inclinometers back. They recognize it's probably better priority to look at what you got already out there than to spend a bunch of money to build something else to look at, at this time with limited budget. But recognize the two spots that did shear off, you know, are in the, I believe both in, they're in the, one is in the Key Lock, which is kind of the higher, higher sensitivity area, just given the previous lawsuit. And then Pebble Beach was one of the areas they identified in the, the March twenty-first meeting of where you're seeing the, the sort of creep pushing along and adding something in there. So, we did ask BSK to not only give us the range, which we put into the staff report, but how they built that, you know, cost by looking at their, what's the labor? You know, frankly, you're thinking, well, I gotta go look at inclinometer, why does it cost so much? Well, they're really deep, you have to spend a lot of, a fair amount of time, you know, they're not in the easiest places to get to. And then you gotta figure out the reading, it's not something you just like take a dipstick and you, you move on, it, it does take time. So I wanted to give you scale to understand, you know, what the cost is and why it is what it is. There's no easy decision in this. I think the purpose of the discussion is to make sure that everyone's on the same page as how we want to move forward. And, you know, as the board, you know, how you would like to decide, you know, what to prioritize and pursue, it's my job to engage with you and to then implement it, you know. I recognize, you know, there's not likely to be an assessment increase immediately, so we had to budget for twenty-four. But you do have a, you know, a pretty known budget deficit in terms of the required services even within your plan of control, you know, that was established thirty years ago. So if there are, you know, thoughts of sort of downscaling, you know, the level of services, I do think we have to be clear, okay, what are, you know, are we going to amend the plan of control, these other things, so? And the community, or, you know, the folks within the, the district, they understand the level of service that is going to be provided as well.
I just have one more question, along that same line with the breakdown that you gave us. You mentioned that the routine maintenance, the, the pieces that were paid by the landscape maintenance districts, districts. So that's routine maintenance, it's ditch and inlet clearing, basin cleaning, and then the V, V, my gosh, I can't speak, vegetation and weed abatement for fire protection. So that looks like that's roughly seventy thousand that the LMD is covering. Is, but it doesn't seem like that was based on the pictures that we got, like, that, all of that wasn't being done. So, is your recommendation to keep, that's the amount that it should be and we need to pay this from the LMD, or we need to increase it? Like, is, I'm curious if it's been insufficient with the funds that we've been paying, because it hasn't been being done.
I would just say that, that's the approximate that's being spent today.
Okay.
I don't, I would say overall, I don't believe the level of service with that seventy thousand is like way below what it needs to be, the weed abatement is being addressed.
Yeah.
Are there certainly some ditches that could get cleaned a little bit better and some inlets? Yes, I've seen that pointed out, I think that could be addressed, but I don't think that overall cost will go up significantly.
Okay.
I think the level of service, you know, BSK, when they went out there, they, you know, they had a pretty good assessment of what was, or a positive assessment of when they went and saw the ditches. Certainly, some, you know, property owners in the area felt it could be cleaned better, and those pictures are there, I agree. It needs to be maybe watched a little bit better and addressed, but overall, I don't think it requires like twice as much labor to do it.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Can you remind me when the last time we actually did monitoring of a pyzometer?
Can you remind me when the last time we actually did monitoring of our pyzometers and our inclinometers?
I don't know the exact date, board member. I, the predecessor to my firm being involved was Harris. I believe they had a firm, Stephen Ferrone and Bailey, that did the last set of monitoring for this district. I can't recall which date that their last time was done. But since my firms came on board, we have not done it yet. You know, we are aware that it's part of the process. That's why we're going through this discussion. But BSK has not, you know, they identified where the locations are based off the map, but the actual readings have not been done.
I thought that there was an indication on the prior BSK report that at least in one of the locations, the last known monitoring was 2016. Is that accurate? So I would imagine that any monitoring that we do today, it's just one data point and we would need to compare it to prior data points to get any, anything of informational value? Is that-
So you're correct. I believe the, the last report that we have of evidence of any monitoring was 2016. And I think to answer your question is, you know, the budget or the rough estimate that BSK put together, the matrix there, assumes that we would have to do a new baseline reading.
A new baseline? You wouldn't take the prior read?
They are on plots. Usually you have that in digital form and it would be difficult. And there may have been so much movement between then and now that it would be best to start fresh after so many years. Because usually you don't wait seven years in between readings. I think the plan of control requires-
Quarterly.
Yeah, quarterly. We suggest going, you know, semi-annually, right, twice a year? And then eventually, if we got to a comfort level that, yeah, we're not seeing much, we would push back to once a year. Now, if we could go backwards, right? If we see something being aggravated, we would be like, hey, we need to do this quarterly, right? Because we need to have a better reading type of thing. But in the beginning, ideally, we would do twice a year. The plan of control calls for four times a year.
So that's the length of time, 2016 through, assume that 2016, you have a reading and it's 2023, so generously, that's seven years. Does that make any reading that we take, sorry, does that make the current reading compared to the prior not useful in any way? Because I'd imagine if there were movement, it would show over the seven-year period just as much as, you know, over any time period.
So you have to think of calibration, right? If you have any understanding of calibration, each equipment is slightly different than other. So we certainly don't own the equipment that was used before. Yes, it's an inclinometer, but there are slight differences. So that's where the calibration would come in, right? So we would certainly push for, you know, doing a baseline reading. And we would, I would say, within half a year or a one-year period, we would start having a very good idea that, yeah, things are stable or gee, there's quite a bit of movement, right? Certainly, to echo what Larry mentioned, you know, the two that sheared off, that's not good news, right? And they sheared off seven years ago, who knows what's happening? The other thing to think about is we have had very, very dry years over the last few years. And events like earlier this year, it almost, you know, that amount of water, it takes a while to get down deep. And it acts, eventually it could act like a trigger or a lubricant, if you will, where you could all of a sudden start seeing much more significant movement in the, in the two locations. Pebble Beach is one of them and certainly Key Lock, right? And then there's the third location, which is the cul-de-sac. But as discussed before, right, it's only impacting one home. And I think it has to impact more than two properties before it becomes a GAD.
At least two?
Yeah, at least two properties. And that's why if you look at the order priority from the BSK list, the cul-de-sac is the last item on the list, right? If you had, the way we try to prioritize this is, okay, if, what is the bare minimum? Well, the bare minimum would be to do the visual inspection, ideally twice a year. That's what the plan of control calls. But if you had to really cut it back, it would be a minimum of once a year, right? And I would do it just before the rain season so that if there's blockage, right? What you don't want to happen is what happened before. One of the drain inlets south of Pebble Beach, I forgot what the name of the street was, but it blocked a drain inlet and it caused, you know, erosion down below, right? And that's the purpose of doing this periodic cleaning is you do prevent things from escalating, right? Because the number one cause of a landslide is accumulation of water, right? It lubricates, it weakens the material, and then it runs down. If you're able to quickly dissipate that water downhill elsewhere, you prevent anything from being triggered.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just, just for clarification, an inclinometer is basically a piece of schedule 80 or 40 PVC that's put in at a perpendicular straight vertical pipe in the ground. And essentially, what we're doing was we're measuring lateral movement. So if a hillside is moving, it will bend, and you're measuring the bend or the pressure every time you're doing a monitoring event, correct? And if it's got, moved too much, it's going to shear, shear off completely and you're no longer going to have a measurement because it's a broken point. They won't go down to depth anymore, longer, is that from a visual standpoint?
Yeah, and that's what has happened on two of the inclinometers, you know? I believe the one on the cul-de-sac sheared off around 50 or 60 feet below the surface. That's a Key Lock, the cul-de-sac there. Yeah, it's no longer usable. You could theoretically do a new baseline reading to that depth. But if the movement is below, it's, nothing's happening. And, you know, again, going back, you know, why it takes so long? So you do, for each inclinometer, you have two directions to do a reading. You know, there are grooves, you know, if you can think of a plus sign, right? So one, one sort of grooves would be perpendicular to the slope and then the other one would be parallel to the slope, okay? And that way, you can kind of get a, almost like a three-dimensional reading, not quite exactly. Quite, quite side. The second thing you would get from inclinometer, it also acts as a pyzometer, right? It's open at the very bottom, so it does allow water to rise or fall. And every reading we would perform, we would also drop a low-tech measuring tape. It's a little reader, it actually beeps when it, you know, because getting down to 100 feet, you know, you may or may not feel dropping in water, but it would be, you know, pretty, pretty useful information, right? Because, for instance, if we had done the reading for the last seven years and now after all these storms, we noticed that the groundwater went higher, the other thing I would be look is, does that, does that correlate with additional movement, right? And if it does, it's like, what do we need to do? And that's when you install wells, you do horizontal drilling to kind of dissipate their pore pressure, right? So to answer your questions like, what can we do with the monitoring information? That's what you could do. And it would be a lot cheaper to do like horizontal bores and wells than excavate the whole hillside, put it back, let alone impacts to homes.
But that cost for doing, putting a tape down there, I mean, that, you could rent that for 100 bucks and go down and tap the depth of groundwater in each, in each location. But do you have the data about where that was historically? Or groundwater was historically in each of those pyzometers? I mean, is it, I mean, is this all brand new to you if you were taking over? We had to do, start from scratch? And that's kind of, I'm kind of curious.
Yes, some would, would literally be starting from scratch. You know, there are previous reports that we can go to and we can compare. But, you know, we would still have to do the reading going forward just to make sure that, you know, water, the water level is, whether it's stable, going up, or dropping.
It is pretty clear we're flying blind after this past winter where we are. Just acknowledge that.
I would add that the pyzometers being sheared off was known many years ago. The, looking at previous staff reports, there was a discussion, are we going to replace those inclinometers and put in new inclinometers? And the decision by the board at that time was to not do it, focus that money on the Owani sidewalk. So there was a decision point previously of where to spend the sort of limited resources. So data-wise, in terms of 2016, that is the timeframe, I believe, that Permco was the consultant, city engineering consultant. And then I believe Harris took over in 2017. And then they were there through 2022.
How many pyzometers are there and inclinometers?
So we're not 100% sure. We know seven on Key Lockway. And then there's two by the Key Lock cul-de-sac, one of which is sheared. And then there's two more at Pebble Beach, one of which is sheared. If you were to look at the notes in the detailed matrix from BSK, in our budget, we assume we would possibly encounter four more. So that's one of the items. I think that's priority item number two or three, where we would be confirming the number of existing inclinometers that are out there. I think it's item number three on the BSK matrix.
Wouldn't it make sense to send a technician-level employee out there to each one of those inclinometers with a measuring tape that would measure groundwater and has a footage marker? You go down until it goes to the bottom. You can measure the depth of the well without measuring the movement, lateral or otherwise. Figure out if it's sheared or not and if you have groundwater or not. You can figure out the depth and location. And that's not a real technical, time-consuming thing. Each well, would it be pretty inexpensive to go and tap and figure out its depth? And just figure out the condition of the inclinometer as it is now. If we find out we have three or four more sheared pyzometers, inclinometers, then we have, now we know we have data. Right now, you're flying blind. And I'm quite confident your staff can go out and tap each one of those in a couple of days and call it good and be within a reasonable budget.
Yes. It certainly would be less time-consuming than doing inclinometer reads.
But would the data be valuable and would it give you something to work with? At least tell us where we are.
It would help, be helpful, the groundwater monitor would be helpful. You made a good point that you could drop a tape. It would not necessarily be full indication whether it's sheared enough. It doesn't take a whole lot to shear, or for instance, shear inclinometer. It's just that you can't drop the equipment. It's very often referred to as a torpedo because it's-
I know the equipment.
Exactly. So you can still possibly be able to drop a measuring tape down in the hole shifting. So unless the movement was so significant that it completely offset the two-
Do you know if that was the case, the other two that have been sheared?
We don't know.
I mean, it seems to me that you could put a piece of equipment down there. And you'll know when it catches, you can feel when you drop it in the pyzometer. So, I mean, this is just valuable. I'm just looking for some data that's inexpensive that gives you something. It's not the best, but within our budget, with, we're talking about very minimal funds. I know what it costs for my staff to do that. And it's not very much, but it give you some data. You'd locate all the wells and you'd know what the, what the depth of groundwater is and you'd know if there's a catch point. If it's 150-foot well, our pyzometer are 100-foot, and it's catching at 50 feet, you're going, holy crap, we got a problem with this. And that's good information.
Sure. No, I would concur. Some data is better than no data.
And again, it's, 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 it's good use of our resources to get you some information because we're flying blind right now.
Yeah, no, I would agree.
So maybe it would be, maybe it would be helpful when you, city engineer, or I'm sorry, district manager? Or general manager, sorry. If you, when you're preparing the report as well as the proposed budget, that you contemplate a couple of different scenarios. I think one, as board member Chloven references, an activity that does this type of low-impact monitoring or low-magnitude monitoring, I think that could be useful. Something that contemplates utilizing, as you've laid out here, the existing funds for prioritization of the other monitoring activity. And then I, I mean, also something that says, what if we don't do monitoring and we just devote resources to the things that we know we can do right now that add value in terms of maintenance and what that would look like? Because I, I think it may be a mix, but I would like to, I think it'd be useful information to kind of lay out what possible scenarios there are for each. I'm still, I understand that it may be low-cost to do monitoring. I'm still kind of questioning the virtue of spending money on monitoring when we know for a fact we won't do anything with the information. If, if in fact, we know that. And maybe it would be useful in terms of educating the member or the residents or the property owners of the district, that could be useful. So, I mean, that's kind of like the scenario that I would contemplate.
So to make sure I'm on the same page, I believe the board's asking a multiple scenario breakdown of services within the existing budget for fiscal year 24 to a certain level of detail of, you know, if we are to do monitoring, maybe it's only a certain portion of the type of monitoring and, you know, drill down on that specific service. Look at no monitoring at all and how we use the remaining dollars in more of a capital or reserve situation, maybe some combination of both based off of what the existing situation of, you know, known issues are in the, in the field. So I anticipate at least three scenarios and maybe more. But we could bring those back within the existing 24 budget in the probably June meeting or it can be in July as well, at the next meeting for the engineers' report at this time. If there's any other, you know, in terms of priority or direction that the board would like to favor versus another, it would be helpful for us to, you know, steer in a certain direction. But that's what I've heard so far.
Yeah, that reflects what I was thinking. I mean, because definitely like the catch basin that was filled and caused the overflow and all the water to come down. I mean, I think I would prioritize that over any margin because we know that no matter what happens, if there's any other rain, that's going to cause additional problem, like-
Well, that's a good example in that situation is, you know, I don't recall the exact timing, but I believe that inlet was above Keller Ridge, if I remember correctly. And it was behind someone's home. And there was a very localized landslide, sloughing, you know, we're talking only a few feet each direction. But it blocked the, the feed ditch and part of the inlet. So then water can't get in there, then it spills out everywhere. It spills out and it goes down the slope into people's backyards. It could have been cleared before and then it happened after it was cleared in October. I don't know the exact timing. But then what would be, the timing would be for the sort of annual or semi-annual monitoring is when these folks go back out to check it before the rain. They can identify it and see, okay, here, this happened. Either it didn't get picked up or it, it happened within the last few weeks that needs to be addressed before it rains, or again, you know? And, but that, you know, that is still monitoring, right? That there's a certain amount coming out that someone's looking- That there's a certain amount coming out that someone's looking and verifying what's, what the current status of the system is at that time.
Okay, I was distinguishing between monitoring versus inspection. I think what you're describing, taking a look at the thing, I would, maybe I'm describing it wrong. I think that inspection versus the monitoring is the actual devices in the grounds. Is that a fair way to?
I think that's a fair distinction, yes. I would call that inspection as well. I think that's fair.
Yeah, so what I'm saying, like, separate the monitoring, I'm talking about like the things underground versus like going out to do the inspection.
Okay, understood. That helps me. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, it's along that same line. Sorry. I know we all are really, poor Larry. Thank you, Larry, for hanging in here with us. Back to the inspection, I see that it's priority number one, the inspection of the V ditches, drop inlet, subsurface drain, discharge, et cetera. So is it our understanding then that the inspection is only taking place from the engineers? That's not something that, that staff does?
Well, per your Plan of Control, there's supposed to be a geologist, I think is named, is one of the folks that does the inspection. Does it mean, you know, you know, the process of when they're clearing out the ditches and who's following up? You know, I would probably turn to Jim as to that process because that's been done under, through his group. But mainly, I think they bring out part-time workers to do the work because it's seasonal, right? It's a one-time or a yearly thing. So there's probably a process of making sure to follow and make sure that what they did is what you're paying for, certainly. But then this is meant, the inspection is per more of the Plan of Control to look at geologic issues aside from just, did you do the, clear out the ditch, right? I mean, that's a big part of it. But, you know, are you seeing the creep of the slope going over? Those type of things as well.
Okay, and then when they, after they inspected, so this is priority number one, you inspect. And let's assume we have money to do all of this. What happens after inspection?
So that goes as part of the annual report. So we presented the annual report in March. But the bigger thing is if there's identified issues that, there were a few that came up in October that we relayed to Jim's group that they followed up on. So that's the immediacy of, you know, if there's something that they're seeing, hopefully in October before it really starts raining in November, that they can go address it.
Okay, so that would, you just answered my next question then. So if we were to use this prioritization, I was going to say we've already done number one because they've already inspected it. And we got that in our annual report that we just received.
Yes, we did that in October of '22.
Okay.
Now, the Plan of Control also says you should do it twice a year. The other thought is after the storms, they go out and do a kind of a follow-up, especially this last year. They did do that prior to the March report. So those things get identified as well. That's, you know, as part of what the city identified and how they'd like to operate in their Plan of Control.
Okay, and since that's already in our Plan of Control, that is already happening?
Currently, but what I could tell you is the city can't afford just doing those inspections with the remaining 20,000. It costs more than that. So this current fiscal year, we save money on the Owani sidewalk. So we've kind of shifted some of the money around. But the money in the GAD is some extra one-time money from the Presley Fund. And we shifted a few things and we've spent more because we've done a lot of this research and so forth. So that's why we did it this year. I'm just saying, next year, you still have the benefit of another 50,000, which I think will help cover it. That's why I put it in the budget that's, the '24 budget that doesn't have an increase. But it will, you will be underwater within a year. Let's put it that way. I mean, you can't do everything we asked sort of or recommended clearly for '24, but beyond that, it will get worse, obviously, in '25.
Thank you for clarifying. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, at this time, I will open it up for public comment. And there is one speaker card. Mr. Kellerman, would you like to?
Thank you very much. Really, this is a moment where I can say, look at all the council members. You've asked, all of you've asked great questions tonight. And also, I think there's been some great summary gaps on the issues of our geological hazard abatement district. As a 26-year veteran of that district, I've had many conversations with our city engineer or when we staff the city engineers. So I'm very aware of the issues in the district. And what I can say here is that, you know, most people don't realize, but that district represents 40% of our residents in Clayton, homes in Clayton. And so it's a substantial district. And yes, we are responsible for funding that district. When the city put that in, it was to isolate the city liability from hillside damages and other types of conditions that can happen with soils. And so it was a good thing, I believe. And, but the problem is, is that it really, all the problems originating at the beginning where the city didn't do its diligence. And that was making sure that there was proper inspections and environmental and engineering reviews of the lots that were being developed. And that was a key source of the problems right there. And I won't go into specifics on that, but that was one of the key areas there. The second problem was is the build out of the Jihad district. While it was looked at for economies of scale, the problem is, is about probably, if you look at 1,500 residential homes, about 500 of those. And again, I don't have the exact numbers, but about 400 or 500 of those homes are not at hillside risk. And those were the homes that begin at Keller Ridge and those are the homes that are below Oakhurst Drive. So they don't really have hillside risk. And so getting those folks to agree to a parcel tax is going to be, you may get 10% charity, what I call a charity vote. And that's unfortunate, but that's how the district was built because in Prop 218, you have to vote on this. So it's not like a homeowners association where you have to vote for these things or fund it. And that's the problem that we have in this district here. So what do we do going forward? Well, what I'm going to say to you, with that parcel tax or I guess the funding tax for the Jihad, you know, even if it's weighted, you're going to be needing probably a 60% vote for those people who are not part of Keller Ridge, the condos or for the townhomes that are down below. So it's probably 60, 70%. And so it's going to be very difficult. So what I would just say going forward is, is that if you do decide to go out to residents and poll them to pay additional taxes, I would break it into two areas. Number one, for operating expenses. And number two, that would be for hillside, you know, what I call hillside insurance. So again, that would be something to look at. Last thing, storm damage. If there's any storm damage, please look and see if you can find any. Again, thanks a lot for your time. Great questions today from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Kellerman. Janet, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Chair Trupiano, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay. Anything else that we want to? And I did want to just ask our city manager, any final comments, any recommendations?
I think what would be helpful for staff is if the board has any desire for a future agenda item related to looking at the work plan that would be needed for an increased assessment possibility inclusive of the timing of when staff feels that's most appropriate, the time needed to do the necessary outreach, town halls, communication with the impacted residents or property owners in that area. Staff would need direction from the board on that so we could start planning into our work plan as the kind of months move forward.
And do we need, is there any other action item tonight? Larry, do you feel like you have enough direction from us?
I believe we have, yeah, the direction we need to come back with the annual report with the scenarios.
Okay. Okay, then I will close, item number five. And there are no board items. And we can adjourn at 9:40 PM.
Before we adjourn, did you, did you want us to actually make a motion for staff to do what you asked us to do?
I don't need, I don't need a motion.
Not a motion, but to ask you to do it?
I just need, I just need someone to give me some direction that the general board is, the majority of the board is okay with and a head nod and that I can start to prioritize that in the staff's work plan moving forward.
I would like it.
Okay, so in board items, then, we, just to backtrack, in board items, that is our directive to the staff then?
Well, it's a request for a future.
For a future agenda item to provide the work plan, work plan, priority, timing, everything that would be related to essentially looking at doing an increased Prop 218 assessment vote within the district.
Well, I think specifically what this would be then is a request that we, that the GAD board come back, discuss whether or not we want to give that direction.
That's fine. Yeah, that works there. Or board member, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, then we are going to adjourn. And sorry, I lost my time. Is it 9:00? 9:41. Thank you.